It's time to bring the meeting to order. And we're going to start with the chair's report. And I'm going to say first, welcome back to in-person meetings. It's so nice to see everybody's face. And we will begin as we had done before the pandemic when we are in person by saluting the flag. So would everyone rise please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd also, as part of the chair's report, like to welcome our newest member, Seamus Kelly. We're very happy to have you join us.
Have a good year.
Good to see you. I'd like to congratulate the middle school for their eighth grade award assembly that I caught on Facebook, imagine that, today. And also, I also want to congratulate the high school, once again, Mr. Santri, for a lovely graduation ceremony, which I also caught on Access TV. So while I am talking about that, I wanted to thank Joe McLaughlin and the public access people for the extraordinary job they have done over the last 15 months doing exactly that, public access, so that people are involved in meetings and people can see these major events. So thank them very much. And I want to wish everyone, the staff, the administration, the students and the families, a wonderful, well-earned summer vacation. It's been quite a school year, and everyone's help during this school year is quite appreciated. So now I'd like to take a motion to enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining or contract negotiations.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session at 7:02 PM.
I'll second the motion.
All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we can just vote now. Aye, and we will return to public session.
How long do you think you're going to be?
How long do we think we're going to be?
I don't think real long.
Fifteen minutes maybe?
All right.
Ten, fifteen minutes.
We'll go across the hall.
Okay. We're late, of course. Of course, not too bad though, could have been worse.
I don't know.
So now it's public comment for things that are on our agenda. Does anyone in the public have a comment for us? Hearing no words of comment, then we'll continue. Number five is review and approve minutes. I believe we just have the June 3rd minutes, correct? Okay, was there any comments or fixes of those minutes to you?
None called to my attention.
All right, and so is there anyone that would like to make a motion on those minutes?
I made a motion to approve the minutes from the June 3rd meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Aye. And I'm assuming that you're abstaining due to not being at the June 3rd meeting?
I said aye to it.
Oh, you said aye to, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, we'll see, we're used to the roll call thing. Okay. And then line item transfers.
So there are no separate line item transfers? We'll take that up under budget transfers later in the agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought. So the superintendent's report.
All righty, so we'll begin with some new administration appointments and hires. Patty McCarthy Gillette will be stepping into the director of extended learning programs position beginning July 1st. However, in discussion regarding this position, we actually have now decided that we think that the title Director of Community School Programs is a better fit for the role. So it's the same position, different title. And with Mrs. Perry's retirement effective June 30th, we're really grateful that Mrs. Gillette has accepted this role and she will oversee the extended day summer programming. Mr. Kevin White, currently our assistant principal for the Turkey Hill Elementary and Primary School, will become the full-time assistant principal at the primary school. Mr. John Palumbo will be the new full-time assistant principal at Turkey Hill Elementary. Mr. Palumbo comes to us from Groton Dunstable High School, where he has been a school adjustment counselor since 2012. He has also been a counselor at the Caldwell Alternative School, Littleton Public Schools, and Winchenden Public Schools. In Winchenden, he also served as the athletic director. He started his career in education as a secondary grades math teacher. He earned his bachelor's degree in psychology with a minor in math from the College of the Holy Cross. And he earned his master's degree in counseling psychology with a minor in school guidance counseling from Cambridge College. We feel that this background makes him a tremendous asset for the Turkey Hill Elementary. And an update on the LHS principal position. I helped Zoom forums with staff, students, and parents on June 9th to gather input as to qualities, skills, and experience they were seeking in their next high school principal. Parents and students were also invited to share their thoughts with me via email. As this is a critical hire, after review of the applicants, we will not be moving forward with interviews at this time. Ms. Santri has agreed to stay in the role of principal for the middle and high school for the next year. This will provide stable, strong leadership and communication until we can post the position at the start of the new calendar year, a more favorable time to draw more experienced applicants. And based on the input that was provided to me by the staff, the parents, and the students, I believe that Ms. Santri actually demonstrates all of those things that they were looking for in their next principal. So I think it's a very good fit for the next year, and I'm very grateful to Ms. Santri for agreeing to take that on. The finance committee. Mr. Cassidy and I had been invited to attend the finance committee meeting last Thursday, but the meeting had to be canceled. And it's, as I understand, it's rescheduled for tomorrow evening, but this question is, we have a quorum. So Mr. Cassidy and I will be at the finance committee meeting tomorrow evening. They had requested that we present an overview of the contracts that we've settled. Sectional championships and all-state meets. Lunenburg will be hosting the sectional championships and all-state meets tomorrow and Saturday, and we wish our athletes well in their respective competitions. And lastly, today was our last day of school. So happy that we made it through. But I just want to review a few shout-outs. In district, in the newsletters that I share with staff, and even within the schools now, this has sort of become something that we do. We shout out to the people who have done something above and beyond or have been extraordinarily helpful. This actually was in the Lunenburg ledger back in April for the townwide issue. But I wanted to make sure that I offered these sentiments myself directly, publicly. So I would like to give a shout-out to our teachers and service providers for the way they have approached new ways to teaching in a relevant and meaningful way, for all of the effort to learn how to use new instructional tools, for all the hours they have spent redesigning the curriculum and lessons for digital delivery. They have been very student-centered and they have done an amazing job. A shout-out to our paraprofessionals for the extraordinary flexibility and commitment to the students and the team by teaching classes when we had no substitutes. They helped to keep our schools open. A shout-out to our substitute teachers for covering teacher absences, for trusting that we would provide them a safe place to work, for helping us to keep our schools open. Shout-out to the nurses for the contact tracing of all the positive cases in the school, for reassuring concerned students, parents, and colleagues about quarantines and what happens next. Because of the quick work in contact tracing and moving staff and students quickly to quarantine, they helped to keep our schools open. Shout-out to our behavioral health staff for all their efforts to provide students, families, and staff the supports they need to manage the anxiety, stress, and overwhelm, all while managing their own. They provided a lifeline to many this year. Shout-out to our IT department for working to order inventory and issue devices to students, paraprofessionals, and teachers, for setting up all the new technology and teaching teachers how to use it all, for troubleshooting technology glitches with our teachers, for providing tech support to students and families, for assisting families in securing internet access. They kept the critical infrastructure for teaching and learning working. Shout-out to our food service staff for making sure students had meals whether on campus or off campus, for hours of food preparation, for our grab-and-go meals, home delivery of those meals when needed, and for reassuring with a smile through their eyes for every student that was here on campus at lunchtime. Shout-out to our custodians and maintenance staff for all their efforts to ensure a safe environment for teaching and learning through constant oversight and quick repair of ventilation systems, for hours disinfecting the building nightly, to safely accommodate staff and students in the morning, and for moving furniture to accommodate more social distancing. Again, they help keep our schools open. Shout-out to our secretaries for implementing new ways to keep us operational day-to-day and allowing us to conduct school business as seamlessly as possible. Shout-out to the bus drivers for transporting our students safely to and from school each day, and for the flexibility to make constant adjustments as we changed learning plans for individual students throughout the year. To our SRO for accompanying us on home visits to check in on those students not engaging in their learning. To our comfort dog Hank for helping reduce stress and anxiety to staff and students and for giving us lots of reasons to smile. To our extended day early learning center and school community linked services program for providing safe programs in support of students and families. Shout-out to our athletics department for implementing each season with strict safety protocols to keep our coaches and students safe and healthy so that they could play the sport they love, and they successfully completed four seasons with no shutdown of the program. Shout-out to our building administrators for the ways in which they validated concerns, managed anxieties of staff, students, and families while managing their own, for pivoting to address every challenging condition or new state mandate that came our way, for unwavering steady leadership through the unknown. For our central office administrators and staff for being a phenomenal team of creative thinkers and problem solvers, for quick solutions and long-term planning that provided necessary supports for our staff and administrators, for a whatever-it-takes mindset, for unwaveringly steady leadership through that unknown. Shout-out to our school committee for their commitment to providing a physically and emotionally safe environment for our faculty, staff, and students, for trusting your school administrators to make the decisions in the best interests of health, safety, overall well-being of staff and students, for your support of adjustments to continuously improve the teaching and learning experience this year. Shout-out to our town manager for steady leadership and support of the schools for assisting us in securing whatever was necessary to keep our schools open and providing the best possible teaching and learning experience. Shout-out to our local board of health for being our partners all year long and helping us navigate the pandemic in a way that kept everyone safe. A shout-out, a big shout-out, to our families for partnering with us in the education of our children, for the sacrifices that they made in order for this to happen, for trusting us to keep the children safe at school, and absolutely for the patience and constant adjustments to improve the learning experience this year. And lastly, the shout-out for our students, for their resilience through the entire last 15 months. They lost experience in some traditions, but they also gained some new experience as well. I think it might take a little bit of time for them to reflect on and realize how much they actually accomplished through this year. We're very proud of our students. So thank you all very much for indulging me in the public shout-outs for everybody who helped make it through the year. We could not have done this without all of those folks. So thank you all.
Well, and we thank you as well.
Thank you. All right, and that's all I have for the seating.
All right. We have no student representative that I can see.
Correct.
So under old business, the LHS program of studies update.
So I would invite Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Santri to come up to the table. And at your direction, I will advance slides.
Sure, absolutely. We can actually move to the next slide. So for the past couple of years, I've actually come in front of the school committee asking for some changes to the social studies curriculum, as we've tried to re-envision what the social studies curriculum could be. And what is, you know, as being a small school, it's sometimes difficult to offer many, many things. So we've tried to get creative. And if you go back three years to the 2018, 2019 school year, this was the entire social studies course offering, a fairly standard offering with a world history course that all freshmen took, a US I, US II, two APs, AP US History II, AP US Government, and economics and psychology as two electives. That was 2018, 2019. I then came to you, and we can go, and I had asked if we could, you know, for approval from the school committee to reduce the US History curriculum from a two-year to a one-year, but not with the intention of teaching less, but actually teaching more history. What I meant by that is what we're able to do by removing that full-year US History II and by teaching the content as a survey level, a broad overview of US History, our students can then pick and choose other areas of history. And over the last two school years, you can see that our offering has expanded significantly. Everything in yellow are the courses we have added over the last two years, from the history-based courses, the medieval era, early America, the nuclear age, and the fight for civil rights, to a civics area with civic community engagement, inter-civics. Of course, in pink is that new US History course that has been into one year. With this, we now have a wide range of both history courses but also the social sciences as we're growing our civics curriculum, and we also have a substantial growth in history that students can pick and choose areas that they like to study. Some of our students are choosing all of them, others are, you know, choosing the obligatory one, but either way, you know, they do have that choice as to what areas they can really become experts in. So then what we would like to ask of school committees for approval of kind of a continuation of what we've been trying to do, we would like to add an introduction to law class and for this upcoming school year, 2021, 2022. And into the program of studies, we would like to add the following. The Intro to Law course includes learning about the civil and criminal legal process, case law, and legal rulings, as well as contract creation and interpretation. It is highly recommended that you join the mock trial team when taking this course, as there will be a strong connection to the mock trial program. This course is particularly useful for those who will pursue careers in the legal field or law enforcement. We do have a mock trial program that's been going on for many, many years here. Currently, it's been coached by Lisa LeBlanc, and Lisa LeBlanc would be teaching the course. So there's that strong connection there. And one of the visions of this course is that students could take it as a foundational introduction to law, and then if they wanted to, they could join mock trial freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year, and by taking that one course, you could then develop those skills for the next four years. And that this Intro to Law could really build on that. Students would not be required to take mock trial, but it would be, as it says here, highly recommended. But even those who don't, any student interested in a legal field or a law enforcement field, this would be beneficial for them. And then to finish my statement on this, I actually sent out an email to my whole department, and to Mr. Santri, and to Ms. Scott, Director of Curriculum, not only thanking them, thanking my department for all they've done, and creating new courses is a lot of work. And they have jumped into it, and during, and you think about what last year was like and what this year was like, and yet we did it. And, you know, we created every one of those courses with curriculum maps, with, you know, with a strong curriculum base, and I thanked them. But then I said, if we had Intro to Law, think about what we now have. When any student who lives in Lunenburg, or any student thinking about school choicing in, I would put our high school up against any other small high school, because we can now say, we have, if you want to get into law, we will have a law course. Poly-sci, we have AP Government, and we have civic community engagement. Economics, we have an economics course, and we have a wide range of history from the medieval era all the way up to the present. And so over just a two-year period, I feel like we've substantially changed it for the better, and I think this kind of caps it off, and we are looking to add this to our program studies.
Mr. Santri, do you want to comment on how we're able to do this with the schedule?
Well, I think it aligns with Dr. Burnham's strategy plan, and one of the goals was to look at the middle high school master schedule and see if we could incorporate more opportunities for students in the middle school and the high school. So we were able to lock in an additional block with the high school, so we're locked in M B Block and C Block. What that means is that we can free up an eighth grade teacher that would be able to teach this ninth grade law class. It poses some other opportunities potentially as we move forward, locking in more blocks or having more opportunities for high school students to have these classes that are essential. So that's how we were able to do it without an additional staff member at the high school.
Wonderful. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I want to thank you for the overview in the background. I thought that was helpful seeing the addition of the courses. And I love the idea of adding a law, so people who want to get into criminal justice, they have that opportunity, and maybe we keep more students coming to Lunenburg that way too. I did have a question in regards to APs. Do you feel like we're sufficient enough with AP courses that students are taking them, say, junior, senior year? Is there room for improvement to add a third? Would it make sense to add a third?
One of the things we, the answer is almost like yes, and it's complicated, because we, being a small school, there's only so many bodies. You know, if it's a thousand-person high school, we have a lot more bodies, but we have a 420-ish person high school. So there's less bodies to fill classes. And as we add more things in, that's less bodies potentially somewhere else. You have to fulfill your unified, or you have to fulfill your jobs. But with that being said, I actually can tell you that just this morning, you know, as I was doing my rounds around talking to each member of my department, saying goodbye and so forth, we have a member of our department that just achieved tenure, which is fantastic and ending his third year. And I said to him, well, what's your vision for the next two years here, three years? What do you want from this department? And we talked about that, and then, you know, I mentioned to him that within our department, we have things fairly well spread out. I generally teach AP US Government. Haley Martin, who's about to be Haley Atori, she just got married and she's next year going to go with a new name. She generally teaches AP US History, and Tim Makuga, who shared between ELA and history, generally teaches AP Language. So I said to him, I don't want you to feel boxed out, we can share things like that. But then I also brought up to him that there's a course called AP Human Geography that is considered an introductory AP course. Many schools offer it at the freshman, sophomore level. And though I have no idea if we could introduce it, that would be a bigger conversation with administration, I did mention to him that maybe that's something we could look into, you know, as maybe we introduce kids of sophomore year to an AP, and then as they enter junior year, and they start taking those more difficult APs, whether it be the AP Language, the AP Calculus, the AP Bio, AP Chemistry, AP History, that AP Human Geography or AP Psychology is also considered a more of an introductory AP that many schools offer at the sophomore year level. So literally this morning, we actually had a conversation about a vision, but it is a vision, it's nothing that's been talked about at the administrative level yet.
No, that's good to hear, though. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My comment would be, I am so delighted with how these courses have been developed. To have choices in the area of social sciences is huge for kids. When my daughter was in high school, which granted was a very long time ago, there were no choices, and she had to write her own. She independent studied all the way through for her history major that she eventually got in college. It was very difficult. This is a much better path for kids. This was a wonderful, wonderful thought to rearrange the history department this way, the social sciences. So thank you.
So do we need to vote to accept this?
To accept it into the program of studies.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the LHS program of studies update as presented.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is committee reorganization, and we had done this to make sure as we organized our committee, we didn't have Mr. Kelly with us. So now we want to give him some opportunities to jump in on some of our committees. So let me just pull this up here, and I'm going to read through what we have, I guess is the best way to do it. Let me jump down to what is flexible, what is flexible. In policy, Ms. Kelly and Mr. Laytonen are doing that this year. The Sickleaf Bank, Ms. Shapiro is joining that group. I generally do the finance committee liaison because that's extremely time-consuming, and being an retired person on the board, I have more time. Mr. Laytonen is on capital planning. Ms. Shapiro is doing wellness advisory. She's also the liaison to the PTO as well as Mr. Laytonen. The PACSAL liaison is Ms. Kelly this year. Now, school council representatives. Ms. Shapiro is at the high school, I'm at the middle school, Ms. Kelly is at the elementary school, Mr. Laytonen at the primary school. The Athletic Advisory Committee, Mr. Laytonen is on. The Lifelong Learning Advisory is Ms. Shapiro, and the Passios Building Design is Mr. Laytonen. Now, some of these we've been working on for a few years and would be hard to shift. I would tell you that if you were available, because my role has expanded on the committee this year, I don't mind at all if you wanted, sorry, Mr. Santri, but if you wanted to jump to the middle school advisory, that would be fine. I didn't know if that was something that could fit into your schedule. It's one Monday afternoon in March, about 3:30 in the afternoon.
So one thing I do is I travel for work, so it would just depend on that.
It would depend on the work travel. If you wanted, what we could do is I could sub when you were unavailable, if that's something that you would like to do. And then Ms. Shapiro had taken some of the courses because she is a college student, and she will be at college next year. So she's going to have to run back and forth, where this year everything was Zoom-y, so it was no problem. So she said that if you wanted to take one of her less-meeting groups that don't meet all of that often, like the Wellness Advisory Committee, that meets just a few times a year in the evening, or...
And what is that?
The Wellness Advisory is a group that does exactly that. They work with the behavioral health people and talk about what we can do for behavioral health as well as physical health of the community.
Time-based, isn't it?
You'd be interested in that? Okay, well, does that sound like a good starting off point? Any other suggestions for anyone?
The only other suggestion I would throw out there is if you wanted the policy, that Laura has to experience, I could step back, because I did take on Laura this year too. And I don't know if you were interested in Laura too, but policy is reviewing policies as they update with the superintendent you usually meet with, as well as Laura, and you just go through different policies that need updating.
How was the, for that?
We met a couple times last year, not a lot.
We covered an awful lot of ground last year in probably four, maybe.
Yeah, we met on... Yeah, we met on Zoom, so I don't know what it would be like. I feel like this year, we potentially could still be on Zoom for some meetings.
Well, since, you know, the governor signed the bill today, yes, we, we can continue to meet via Zoom through April.
So I think that can help for policy and others, some potentially subcommittees.
Okay.
Makes it a little bit more flexible.
Well, absolutely. Or we can just ring our council.
Yeah, stuff like that. I would recommend policy, and then the lead, it's one up for me, because I gained at least one down.
Okay.
That works.
All right. Then we will consider ourselves organized once again.
We, yeah.
Can we just wrap to make a motion? Can we just recap the change? The change would be that Mr. Kelly would replace Mr. Laytonen on policy. Mr. Kelly would replace me at the middle school council, but I will secondary that. And then he would also replace Ms. Shapiro on the wellness advisory. So do we have a motion then to make those changes?
I'll make a motion to reorganize the committee as presented by the chair.
All right.
Might I also request that under the reorg administrators and advisory capacity, if we could add Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Rebecca Hyde?
All right.
Set that adjustment to the motion.
Okay. So with that adjustment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we are reorganized. Going on to new business, the primary and elementary school handbooks.
So I'd invite our principals to the table, Mr. Adams and Mrs. Champagne. We'll be bringing the middle and high school members to the next meeting, and we'll be on my next.
You want me to go first?
Absolutely.
All right. So, good evening, there with you. This is my first time going through a handbook review with the school committee. A lot of the changes that were made were more on a personnel level, and there were some grammatical errors and some typos and things of that nature that we corrected. We took out some language, some confusing language. Under drop-offs, there were two statements regarding busing and not passing buses when the lights are flashing, flashing. I didn't feel like it was redundant language, and actually, it almost contradicted a previous statement, so we kept, we kept one of those statements in there. The majority of the rest of the changes to this handbook came from the special education department. There was an audit that was done with Ms. Hanscom, and she added that information into our handbooks. And there was also some vaccination changes or updates that Katie McGuire has, has put in. And the only other major change is that a lot of the other schools have Chromebook device statements. I put in the iPAD device statement. Other than that, there weren't many changes to my, many of our procedures. I, I don't think there were any more changes to any of our procedures. It was mostly, like I said, it was mostly grammatical and staffing, including the school advisory committee, the school committee, some of our key personnel changes in the, at the office level.
So, good evening. First of all, Haye Champagne at Turkey Hill Elementary School, welcome to the school committee. And Ms. Kelly, delighted to hear you're going to be on SAC with us. That's great news.
Yes, excited.
So, very similar changes as Mr. Adams in terms of updates to the special education policy with Juliana Hanscom, the vaccination policy, that, that sort of thing. The one unique update that I would like to bring to your attention tonight is our homework policy at the elementary school. So, this last school year, in so many ways, has provided unexpected opportunities. For example, the Zoom meetings that we now partake in and are a regular part of our, our culture. But because it was such a challenging year with the hybrid and the fully remote and the live streaming and, and all of that, we really didn't have homework during the, the 2021 school year. Because for the majority of the year, the kids were home all day, right? And, and on Mondays, too. So it just seemed kind of, just more than was necessary. There was so much to get used to. But it made us reflective at the end of the year about the place of homework, and some of the challenges with homework, especially in terms of equity. And so what I mean by that is, there are children who go home and they have a place all laid out to do their homework, and parents who are supportive, and it's a quiet environment, and they're all set, right? And then there are other children who just don't have those opportunities. And so, I asked my teachers to reflect on if they felt that there was some significant academic difference for the students this year not having experienced nightly homework, right? And they felt that there wasn't. So we did a little research, and certainly the research is very mixed on the efficacy of homework. I know that in general, it's believed that at the higher grade levels, it's, it, it tends to reflect a greater progress for students, but not, there, there just didn't seem to be a clear cut, oh, yes, homework is very important at the early levels. Although I do appreciate that idea of developing self-discipline and habits, good study habits and all of that. So we talked about it, and what I would like to bring to your attention is the idea that I would like to pilot a policy just for the 21, 22 school year. Would like to shift our expectations away from a set number of minutes, four nights a week. But that said, based on my own experience, 27 years as an English language arts teacher, I can hardly dismiss the obvious advantages of free reading, right? Like, but everything, comprehension, vocabulary, spelling, content, you can't, you can't miss it. And, and, but the idea is to promote a lifelong love of reading, not pounded into you, you have to read this many minutes, this much time, because we can, we can quickly run out of enthusiasm for that. So the Lunenburg Public Library has a summer reading program, and we collaborate with them. And they, this last couple of years, they've used an online app, and so kids can go in, and they can track the number of minutes, and they get rewarded and acknowledged and celebrated and all of that. And so we talked about embracing that program and continuing into the school year. So encouraging students to participate in free reading in the evenings at home, but not mandating it. And certainly celebrating it if they do, if and when they do. And we, again, in conversation with my leadership team, we did acknowledge that there are times when home study might be particularly helpful, like preparing for a test or completing a project. And so teachers, I had to include the caveat, they might still require a very deliberate opportunity for homework. But in general, we intend to limit assignments to school time. We have our baseline data from iReady in both reading and math, and we would be happy to give comparative data at the end of next year and see, you know. But we would appreciate it if you would take this under consideration. Do you have any questions?
Questions from anybody?
I really like the idea of this online app for them to...
Right.
Teach them a little bit of responsibility to monitor, too, but it's, it's great.
Yeah, because we, yeah, I, we still definitely want to encourage that reading and, again, celebrate it with them. So I thought that might be a great way to do it, is if they get used to the app during the summer.
I just had two thoughts. One was, I would just want to make sure that teachers are monitoring so that right before grades are due, that like the, in the fourth or fifth grade where they have more than one teacher...
Yeah.
Everybody doesn't decide, the test is all on this day, and so that night, they have three hours of homework.
Right.
I, I would, I would, I would assume that you're going to monitor that, make sure that doesn't happen. And I think that's wonderful. I, I, the whole idea to me, you know, as, as you are well aware, I don't know, most people in this room are well aware, that I spent most of my life in a primary classroom, and I never thought that homework helped anybody, that, you know, that the time could be better spent doing a free reading activity. You have time to practice your math facts if you don't have three sheets of math to do, you know, that kind of thing. So I applaud that idea, I think it's wonderful.
Well, thank you. You know, we, we talked as well about offering like maybe five or six enrichment opportunities, like if they could put that on their Google Classroom each month. So, for example, go with your parents to the grocery store, see if you can calculate the purchases made, or take up a new instrument, like enrichment opportunities for kids who want that challenge. I don't, I don't want anyone to be under the impression that we're lessening the rigor of our expectations in academics. That's not the point, right? It's just, this is our opportunity, it's a really unique opportunity to try something different, based on last year not having any homework, and no one seemed to suffer for it. So let's, let's check it out in a, you know, in a very deliberate way.
Okay. Can I just ask one thing? Just going back to the equity issue, you have some families who have so many books readily available at home, but you also have some families who don't. With COVID, obviously, they weren't able to take any books home from the library, are you working with that for next year?
Yeah, so, so that's another silver lining, is that many of our classroom teachers just developed virtual libraries. Annika Scott, our Director of Curriculum, Teaching and Learning, she provided the professional development. So teachers have beautiful bookrooms that are accessible to kids, so they can just get their, their, their books online.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else about the handbooks, then? I, I just had one other comment, was to make sure that the calendars get updated, because the calendars and the signature pages weren't updated, but I assumed that was going to happen.
Yeah, Liz Peterson, and kind of centralizes the whole thing. She, she's doing an awesome job with that.
And update that.
Yeah.
That was my only other thought.
We actually caught an error in the school calendar for next year that we will bring to the next meeting.
Another one.
So that, so that we can get the day count right, and, and then it'll be ready.
So, this is a...
It's an action.
An action.
So we need to accept these handbooks.
I'll make a motion to accept the primary and the Turkey Hill Elementary Handbooks presented towards...
And a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the cafeteria employees MOA ratification. So Mr. Cassidy, I presume?
Hi, I'm Mike Cassidy, I'm the business manager. It's like, I don't want to lose that if we're going back to virtual, so I'm not going to say that out loud. So, in front of the committee tonight is the, the MOA between the school committee and the Lunenburg Cafeteria Employees. The, we met with, with the group for a very short period, and we were able to negotiate a three-year contract with the group. Just very quickly, just some housekeeping clarifications, it's, they're allowed to carry over two vacation days. And there was just, it was more clarification of the language. There was some language in the contract already, but didn't specify that they could carry over two days. So the, the agreement that, if you do agree to this vote, you can see the new language in the MOA. They're agreeing to some town hall FMLA policy language changes, so that'll be incorporated in their contract. And they agreed to a three-year COLA. So it's, it's a, a 3% COLA, starting on July 3rd, 2021, to Ju, to the end of the school year. So that's year one. Year two is a 3%. And year three, FY23, is 2%. The total value of that, of that increase is $14,357, and that's a total amount. What's in front of the committee tonight, if you approve it, is next to transfer, which will include transferring money from the salary reserve to pay for that, the, the retro for this year, which will be $2,634, $35. So this proposal, this agreement, is going in front of the school committee for official vote. So for your consideration, you, I shared the document with you. If you have any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, I recommend moving forward on signing and agreeing to a contract.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cassidy? So then I need a motion to accept the cafeteria employee MOA as presented.
I'm going to accept the cafeteria employee MOA.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and then...
So the next is, we've got a $15,080 transfer that is coming in front of the school committee. This is transferring funds from the school salary reserve account to cover the, the retro, and some accounts that are in deficit due to stipends this year. That'll reconcile it. We will have a balance in our salary reserve for our final collective bargaining group that remains unsettled at this point. So that should be, the, the remaining balance should be enough to cover any type of retroactive payment that is projected for that group.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Cassidy on the budget transfer? Then I would take a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the line of transfer, Mr. of $15,000, $15,080 as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, the updated unaffiliated employee agreement.
Okay, so, just to, to kind of give you some background information on what this, this document is, so there, there are a number of employees that fall outside of collective bargaining agreements, or personal employee agreements. Some of those employees are, well, it's, it's mostly our extended date program, our before and after-school program. So the coordinators, the directors, the program aides, and the, and the senior aides that report before and after school. We also have a Coda down at the primary elementary school, our greenhouse assistant, which we do not have one currently, and our cafeteria monitors. So these groups of, of people are, are covered by a different agreement between the school committee and this group. What I am proposing is that this group get a similar deal to the paraprofessionals, which is a 2-2-2. So it's a COLA for the next, 2% increase for the next three years. It's also, what I'm also recommending is realigning the salary schedule and eliminating some steps. This will not result in anyone taking any pay cuts, but it'll help the district recruit and hire someone at, at a higher rate. We're still maintaining for our full-time positions a five-step... We're still maintaining for our full-time positions a five-step salary schedule instead of a nine, which is, is a little unusual. But once again, no one is taking a pay cut. In fact, everyone is getting an increase, just based upon the COLAs, and also as we shift a lot of our salaries to align with the minimum wage. So we want to make sure that our before and after school workers, our aides, many of which are high school seniors, and, and some college graduate, or college students, they're, they're making above minimum wage, at or above minimum wage, just trying to remain competitive so we can fill those positions. So the, the salary schedule is set to make sure that we are paying at or above the minimum wage over the next three years. We're also aligning the cafeteria monitors and the greenhouse assistant to the minimum wage as well. So that's one vote that I'm, I'm asking that the school committee make this evening. I don't know if you want to take that vote right now.
Why don't we do that?
Okay, and then we'll go to the next, the next proposal.
Sure. Do I have a motion to accept the adjustments to the unaffiliated staff salary schedule as presented?
I just wanted to say thank you for your work on this too, because I think it's important. There's a lot of job openings out there, so we want to make sure we are competitive and we are paying at least the minimum wage. But with that said, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the updated unaffiliated employee agreement.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The next one is something that it feels like the district has been asking for, for a while, so we finally did a survey and looked at our substitute pays that we're paying our substitutes. So, and this really is aligned with a reflection on some of the minimum wage increases that have been going on in the, in the Commonwealth. So after surveying local communities, we are paying our day-to-day subs at a lower rate. So we're recommending that our teacher substitute pay go from $70 per day to $85 per day. Currently, we, for our long-term substitutes, so if, if, if we hire a substitute for a teacher and they remain in that assignment, that specific assignment, for more than 16 days, then their pay would go up. So you may see that this very often, maybe someone is out for a minor surgery, maybe a, a small FMLA, maybe there's some family issue that's going, it's more short-term. We are, we have been underpaying those people as well, we're recommending an increase from $85 to $100 a day. And then finally, just, we're recommending a small increase from $250 a day to $260 a day for employees who stay, excuse me, substitutes who stay in a long-term subposition for longer than 41 days. And generally speaking, that is for maternity leaves or long-term unplanned FMLAs for our employees. And that $260 is really aligned with the bachelor first year annual salary per, per year. So that's, that's, we're pretty comfortable with that number, so we're recommending increasing that amount. The next few recommendations are for our paraprofessional substitutes, our secretary substitutes, increasing those to $15 per hour. They're currently $14.35, $14.36 per hour for, for paraprofessionals. So we're bringing it up to closer to the minimum wage and aligning that for that, that minimum wage coming. And then our secretary substitutes, which we don't generally have a lot, aligning that with $15 per hour. And at this time, we are not recommending any increase to our nurse substitutes. So that's, we, these increases are based upon analysis from other districts. It'll keep us competitive if, if, if a substitute, a local substitute is, is, is contemplating a substitute job in another district. Hopefully this will keep them local. And that's basically some of the feedback I've been getting from a lot of our substitutes as well. So, so that is for your consideration this evening. So approving the proposed adjustment to the salary, substitute, substitute pay schedule starting July 1st, 2021.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about that?
Can I, can I just add just one more thing?
Okay.
So we, just for a cost on that, it could have an impact of about $17,000 on the local budget. And it, and it varies.
Right.
Depending on the number of absentees that we have. And we do monitor our absentees regularly. We have a system that we, we can look at our, our day-to-day subs on a daily basis, so we are monitoring that. So, so that, that is the potential impact to the local budget.
Knowing that substitutes are so very hard to get, I think it's a very good idea to increase the day-to-day salary, because I know that's a concern of everyone, the staff, families, everybody. It, it's important that there be somebody in the classroom when the teacher has to be out, and it's hard to get when they can make more anyplace else, so.
I, I'll say this publicly, that we do hire a lot of our sub, day-to-day substitutes, so, which is, which is good and bad. Good, it's good because we can really test to see substitutes and whether or not they're a good fit for our system. The bad thing is, if we do have an opening and they apply for the position, we know we're, they're a known commodity, and then we hire them, but then we take them out of the applicant pool. So, so that, but that is a good recruiting opportunity for, for us, and, and for, for the substitute, if, if education is a, is an area that they want to go into. So, so.
All right.
Just for your, for your consideration.
Is there a motion then for, to approve the proposed adjustment to the substitute pay schedule, starting July 1st?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed adjustment to the substitute pay schedule starting July 1st.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now we are to the ESSER 3 update. We get to talk about money coming into the district, very exciting.
Want to give a quick overview of the expectations for the grant?
Okay. We've been talking about ESSER 3 for so long. So this is, this is a verbal update from administration to the school committee this evening. So no slides. So what is ESSER? So that, it's a term that really is the American Rescue Plan Act by the current administration. And it's the dissemination of funds to help district support the, the recovery of learning loss by district. So the Lunenburg Public Schools, it will be getting an entitlement of $1,350,000 and So this is a, it's a big amount. I, I can, I can verify that, you know, just with some of the ways that we were contemplating spending, it went pretty quickly. So this money can be spent over the next three fiscal years, so FY22, '23, '24. All the money has to be spent in off-the-books by September 30th, 2024. The, the new administration has really put a lot of new requirements on this money. So ESSER, when we say ESSER 3, so there was actually an ESSER 1, and there was an ESSER 2. And those funds were primarily for any COVID-related expenses, salary and wages, that new positions that we're addressing, learning loss, supplies, equipment, I mean, we've actually, computers, right? We did, we were able to, to use, transfer our expenditure of $94,000 for, for Chromebooks. So ESSER 3 still includes some of that, but it, there are a lot more requirements. So I'll go through the first requirement, which is the, the district has to publish a back-to-school in-person plan, which we basically have, it's just, it's something that we have to look at every six months and make sure that it coincides with CDC guidelines. So that's something that the administration will keep, keep track of. I'm not sure if, we could certainly provide the school committee updates as we update it on our website. But the next part is the implementation plan. So we've got the, the back-to-school plan and those requirements, and we've got the implementation plan. And that is basically where we're going to be putting our money. And our money can go into three buckets, and that's DESI's term, it's not my term, that's why I'm, I'm reusing it, and it's basically going to academics, social, emotional, and operational, and, and capital expenses. So here's the, the challenging part for us. So the, any expenditures have to be supported by evidence-based practices, and we have to track progress in those areas. So some of, that's why we're really trying to focus in on staffing, because we do have models of tracking data already. So it's, any position that administration will propose based upon stakeholder feedback will have to be supported, once again, by evidence-based practice, and we're going to have to track progress of students for those positions. We need to document, well, the, the funds have to combat loss of instructional time or learning loss by students, and that's really tied to the evidence-based practices. And those evidence-based practices have to address academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students. We can use DESI evidence-based practices, or if, if we have our own, so we do have some flexibility that way. And we're, we're going to have to provide annual. I haven't seen that piece yet. I, I don't know exactly what we're going to have to submit, but I'm sure as we get into the school year, tracking the progress and submitting it to DESI for the federal guidelines is something we're going to have to do. So part of doing that implementation plan is stakeholder involvement. So this is a good opportunity to remind everybody that the superintendent sent out a survey last Friday to various stakeholders, students, families, student, school leaders, teachers, other educate, everyone in paras, custodians, everyone got an invitation to participate in this survey. The survey really focuses in on some of the, the areas identified, academic needs, social, emotional needs, health and wellbeing of students, targeted areas within the, the ESSER grant. Correct me if I, I thought I saw about 236 responses already.
Late this afternoon, it was 256.
Okay, okay, so that's good. So we, we are getting some participation. That survey ends on Sunday, and at that point, administration will, will present the information at the school committee on?
Monday.
On Monday, the 21st, and make recommendations in areas that were identified by the stakeholders. And at that point, we'll be looking for the school committee to support those areas that were identified and move forward on, on an application. So I, I want to give, I'm not going to hold back any information. There are positions that we feel are necessary, there are positions that the school committee has already indicated that are a need under the ESSER grant, our social workers. We are going to be recommending some of the areas that we feel that we have some practices that we can document student progress. So your vote next Monday will allow us to take, to take a look at the, those positions and start advertising, and getting ahead of every single other district that will likely be looking at for the positions that we're going to be looking for as well. I'm going to take this conversation just to the side for a second, and you'll see this in, I, I think you'll see this in the personnel report. You did direct and approve ESSER funds for so, social workers, and we were way ahead of other districts, and I just want to let you know, we're fully staffed on, on those social workers for September 1st. Very, very excited, and it's a very hard-to-fill position. So we're hoping that with the stakeholder information, with the school committee, with the administration presenting a plan, and with your approval, we can start advertising for some positions that we feel are going to be needed, that other districts are going to be looking for as well.
Essentially, we would be submitting well ahead of the deadline for submissions for this grant.
Yeah.
Money.
Did I forget any areas, Dr. Brown?
Did you mention that 20% must be used for, 20% of the grant must be used for social, social, emotional, learning purposes, the behavioral, mental health area.
So we'll meet that with those social workers?
Yeah.
Right off the bat? So I calculated that right away.
We've also been monitoring the, the responses for the survey. We monitor how many, you know, participants we've got, but we're also looking at their actual answers to the different questions. And I would say that, at least to this point, the priorities that are being indicated through the survey are consistent with the priorities that we had already started to make plans for. So that's good news. But we'll continue to, to monitor those surveys through the weekend, so that we're ready to pull together the results of the survey and present a plan on Monday.
Is there any flexibility if, if you have a plan and you put it into place for the first year, and then you find that it's not quite what you thought, you can make adjustments for the second year?
So with any of these grants, the ESSER 1, ESSER 2, ESSER 3, you can submit amendments.
Okay.
And we have submitted for the ESSER. And we have submitted for the ESTA one, we did submit amendments, so, so yes, we would have some flexibility. I mean, we might anticipate a need and then determine that by year three, we no longer have that need, maybe we have a different need. So yes, there is some flexibility.
And if I can, if I can just, like, I know, I have, we have some information. You know, the use of ESTA two funds will also be aligned with some of the stakeholder areas as well.
Sure.
So it's.
But there are no strings attached for evidence-based practices for ESTA two. So we'll be able to meet some of our needs funding through ESTA two and putting the more heavily evidence-based costs into ESTA three.
I even will go so far to say, just looking at some of the data, that I think some of the, our local budget is meeting, will be meeting some of, some of the needs. So we'll have the local budget, ESTA two, and then address it with ESTA three. It's, it's a pretty comprehensive spending plan, so I'm, I'm pretty excited. But it's really looking at that data. So that's a preview, I guess. I've done an update, but just, just be aware that that's coming on Monday, okay?
Just one more thing I want to add. Is there, or will there be a plan as kind of the ESTA funds go away? How we can integrate some of the, the resources that our students are getting so that can continue throughout the years? Where given the, the social workers can integrate with the teachers into the curriculum resources that they can use so that they can continue what the social workers were doing, or at least part of what the social workers were doing?
Yeah, so we anticipate, you know, that there are positions that we are definitely not going to be able to maintain. I would say that the entire administration has been alerted to the fact that they need to be tracking data on all of the positions that are new, whether they're new in the budget or new through either ESTA two or three. Because we may find that some of those positions are important to maintain, and we want to be able to have the data to support the request to maintain some of those grant-funded positions, if that's something that we need to do. So they will be, aside from the evidence-based requirement for this grant, we will be tracking our own data anyway. Part of the thinking around some of the special teacher areas, you know, like the MAPS specialist position as an example. We are hoping that it's, these types of positions are impactful for the students directly, but we're also hoping that that level of expertise is a resource for our teachers so that they are getting consultation around the tier-one instruction for the next handful of years, thereby elevating their own capacity to elevate the tier-one, whether it be social, emotional, or the academics. So we have been thinking along those lines. We want to use these resources to directly benefit the kids for the next three years, but also to benefit our staff so that when these positions are gone, they have built their own capacity in this way. So it is part of the big picture.
Anything else? Well, we're looking forward to that. And the personnel report. Oh, it says action, but there's no action required on that.
Just as, just accept as a report of progress or an update on the ESTA funds.
Do we have to vote on that?
Yeah, just to accept it.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the presentation on the upcoming presentation for the ESTA three?
I'll make a motion to accept the ESTA three update as presented.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So now the personnel report.
Personnel report for this evening. It's, it's a lengthy report, so I just want to bring a few highlights to your attention. Number one is Susan Ahern, a paraprofessional down at the primary school, recently announced her retirement. And to my knowledge, I don't think she was in, like, the.
She was not.
In the, so whether it choice, I have no idea, but I know that the next employee, Lynn Major, I think was included in many of the retirement announcements, but Susan Ahern was not, so I just want to bring that employee to your attention. We did have a number of resignations. On page three, we start going into the new hires. There's a, a line down the middle of the page, just a point of clarification. Employees above that line were FY twenty-one hires, and employees below that line are July first or FY twenty-two school employees. So as you can see, we're starting to hire social workers and psychologists and teachers already for next year. So we're locking in a lot of these positions. So very happy that we're, we had an opportunity to start advertising early and start filling these positions and getting ahead of some of the other communities. So thank you for your support in that area.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Cassidy on the personnel report? So can I have a motion to accept the personnel report? Or maybe I should accept the personnel report, send it back to Cassidy.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your number of work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next is the school committee meeting calendar and summer meeting dates.
So you have a draft of our typical annual school committee meeting calendar. Again, keeping with our first and third Wednesdays of the month. We also put on this calendar the annual town meeting and the annual town election. Just honestly, I think more as a benchmark more than anything, because we know that we'll be doing reorganization following those, those dates. And then it's, we sort of left open for now, July and August meeting dates. You know, in consultation with Mr. Cassidy, we feel that we're bringing to you on Monday the important business that needs to be conducted in terms of the grant, in terms of POs that will be carried, carried forward. So we, we don't see anything on the horizon right now that would necessitate a meeting in July.
Right.
Potentially not even in early August. We could go with the third Wednesday of the month if, if people are available. It asked at the last meeting if everybody could come prepared with availability. And, you know, just your thoughts on a need to, to meet in the month of July. We will be able to continue signing warrants because most folks currently are signing electronically. We can continue to do so. And the chair has been coming in weekly to sign with an actual original signature. So I think that that has been working well. I know that two summers ago, there was no meeting in July or even, even in early August, and folks just came into the office to sign warrants. And we seem to do just fine. I think, you know, Mr. Cassidy and I talked that if you, if you decide there's no need to schedule meetings in July, if anything were to come up, we could certainly contact you and schedule a meeting.
Right.
But we don't see anything on the horizon right now that would require a meeting in July. But I'll leave that up to you.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I guess my initial thought was, if something comes up, we can plan a meeting in July. Hopefully, we can work around everybody's schedules and figure it out. I did have, I guess, the thought of an August, maybe workshop-type meeting?
That's what I was thinking.
Maybe on the eighteenth might be a good idea.
Is that the third, you got further than I did? Is that the third Wednesday?
Yes.
I had thought of that as well, because I think we need to at least review the protocols and make sure everybody's in understanding of them, since we've been away from public meetings for so long. We're going to need to look at the Zoom thing. Do we want to, you know, because we did have great participation from people over Zoom, and, and I don't want to, you know, since it's apparently okay to do, I don't want to curtail anyone from coming. You know, we would be present, like, from home by Zoom. You know, I think we could talk about all those kinds of things at an August meeting. And the other thing that I don't think we did a lot of last year, well, this current year, but this current year was so weird anyways, was goals. Like, what are our goals as a committee? We didn't do a lot of that. So all those things, the things that I think we need to address, and when I look at how heavy the beginning of September and October are, I'm thinking that end of August time is probably the time to do that.
And also, it'll probably be DESI guidelines regarding the elementary level. I'm asking, I think parents would appreciate having the school committee meeting prior going back to school to clarify everything.
So there was a conference call with the commissioner today, and we really aren't likely going to receive any additional guidance until early August. Right now, the guidance is that the COVID restrictions are lifted. I know that the commissioner is still waiting to hear from the medical team and the pediatricians as to whether or not masks will still be required, particularly for the elementary level students. But we were told not to expect any additional updated guidance until early August. Now, things can change. And to your point, Mrs. Kelly, if any additional information comes from the Department of Ed, we would be pushing out a communication regarding those, those updates to families as soon as I have them. But we're, we've been told not to anticipate anything until early August.
So I, I think I would agree. If everybody is available on the eighteenth of August, that that would be a, a good time for a workshop meeting, just to review our protocols and, and do some goal setting. And then if there was a mask issue, you know, we could address it at that time. Does that date work? That date's fine on my calendar.
Yeah, it's mine.
Okay, over there? Yep. Okay. So would we want to do that workshop with Dorothy, or do we want to just review the protocols on our own? Dorothy is our liaison with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And when we have a workshop, we often have Dorothy do it. What's everybody's thought? Or do you want me to reach out to her and see what she thinks?
I guess my initial thought would be, is there anything else we want to do in the workshop? Would she also have ideas on, on the workshop? Or does the superintendent have any thoughts on adding to the workshop too?
The protocols won't take long to go through, I, I wouldn't think. And figuring out the Zoom thing shouldn't take all of that long either, because I'm willing to bet the select board will be doing it all summer, so we can just sort of jump on that and see what they did. So, you know, I'd be okay with that. Did you, had you had any thoughts on workshop meetings or?
I had not.
So I can reach out to Dorothy and see if she has any thoughts on what might make sense coming off of this very strange pandemic year. But I think we should schedule a meeting that night.
Yeah, with or without Dorothy, I think it could be fine.
I really liked the thought, like, establishing more committee goals, because I haven't experienced that because of the craziness of the year, so that would be the.
Yeah, we, we previously had goals that we really worked on and then reported back on, but it didn't work last year. We were, our goal was to keep everything afloat.
That's, that's one reason I like having Dorothy, because we do have, like, three new people who have never had Dorothy.
Right, absolutely.
But I just want to also make sure that we have that time to have those discussions, and it's not just Dorothy led.
Yes. Okay, so I'll, I'll do that.
It's possible that they may have developed a workshop presentation around the equity work, because that is a big focus for the state. So you might inquire as to whether or not they actually do have that type of a workshop available now? Might be something to consider.
That's a focus in the district next year.
Yes.
That might be something to look at as well. Yeah, I can ask her about that. In looking at the month-to-month and such, I know this year, we worked hard and we did some rearranging to put our budget hearing before FinCom needed it. Can we do that next year? I mean, I, I don't know that, I mean, unless there's some kind of weird crisis that we don't know anything about. Because you have it down here as the twenty-seventh of April. I'd rather see it on March sixteenth, if we can do that.
I don't see any reason why we can't.
Yeah, because that should fit right with the FinCom schedule, and will just be their last meeting, as we did this year. And that way, they get an approved budget, and that just makes it, you know, it's kind of hard for them to get a budget that isn't approved, but we kind of think that's where we're going. So if we could change that. Other than that, it all seemed fine to me. Did anybody else have any questions about the schedule? Okay.
So, so we'll get those edits done and get your copy that includes the August meeting. We'll also get it posted.
Okay, that sounds good. Very good, thank you. So now we are at public comments for open items. Any items under our purview? Are there any public comments?
I have to do.
Mr. Beardmore.
So I have a, I have a question to ask in my role as liaison in the finance committee, and I have a personal public comment. So let me ask my question first. We have invited the superintendent and the finance director to our meeting tomorrow night, as she, as she outlined. I, I would just like to ask if we could include some of the additional items that came up tonight with respect to the contracts, and just so that we can kind of capture it all. The action that you took with respect to the cafeteria workers' contract, you mentioned that there was a salary reserve transfer requirement, but that was not included in the motion that was made with respect to the contract. And so my question was, was that included in the subsequent motion that was made for the fifteen thousand X dollars?
Yes.
Or is there a delta there that has to be addressed?
The, the transfer that the school committee voted on after the MOA included the.
Included the, the money for the cafeteria.
Yeah, for the retro.
All right. The question's been running around in my head for an hour and a half, so I need to ask a question. My other comment was, first of all, welcome. It's good to have you here and looking forward to working with you. Just at a personal level, and I wish the principals were here. As a parent, I want to congratulate all of you. It's been a hell of a year. And the superintendent and I spoke a month or two ago about, you know, what we owe our teachers and staff just for what they've done for us, and, and I don't think we could adequately. But the administration has done an amazing job as well, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, and we agree. All right, so we're moving on to the. All right, so we're moving on to the athletic advisory committee.
Yes, we met last Monday with planning, again, similar to last year, planning that fall sports will happen. We did have some fundraising requests. The field hockey is going to be doing their calendars again. That was approved, and also the football fundraiser of the gold cards were approved as well. And then we're having another meeting on August 30th in preparations of other fall sports that might want to do fundraisers. And we kind of had that discussion in the meeting too, that if things happened where they had to cancel the event, it was better off to approve it and then cancel it after, then scramble to last minute, try to get something approved.
True enough.
Okay, next is FinCom, and they did not meet, as we talked about, but I, I was present at the FinCom nomination committee meeting last night. We met last night. The nominating committee for the finance committee is Mr. Alonso, myself, and the town moderator, Tim Murphy. So we met last evening and appointed Mr. Tom Baylish and Mr. Tom Gray, two Toms, to the finance committee, each for three-year terms, and they would be seated on the committee on July 8th, and they are taking the seats that were currently held by Terry Birchfield and Heather Soroka. And their next meeting is tomorrow evening. PTO, and I went to the PTO meeting as Sophie was unavailable, and that was on Monday evening. There was the PTO presented a $1,500 scholarship to Abigail Cohen. They also, for bus driver appreciation, gave each of the bus drivers gift cards to the smokestack roasters. They are going to order car tags for the primary and elementary schools so that the pickups goes smoothly. They're ordering them this week, so they will be in in plenty of time, so everybody will have their car tags for the fall. They're hoping to be able to plan the kindergarten social, and they did do some talking about possible fundraisers for next year. There was a lot of discussion about the need to increase membership, and that they feel that people don't realize that, like, if you sign up to be a member, that doesn't mean you have to go to all the meetings, that doesn't mean that you're on the baking list, it doesn't mean any of those things. I will say that my kids were five years apart, so I was a member of the PTO for 18 years, and I attended one meeting. So, but they got my membership money, and I, I bought whatever stuff they were selling and all that kind of stuff. So I think that people don't realize those things. So they talked about that, and they were hoping to have in-person meetings once monthly next year, beginning in August. So that was the news from the PTO. School councils, I don't know if anybody met since we last met, primary school?
Primary is all done for the year.
All done, elementary, all done, and the middle school was all done, as I believe the high school was. Capital planning?
We haven't met yet.
No. The wellness advisory, I don't believe met. I know PACSAL did not meet. Passo's building design?
Yeah, so we met tonight at 5:30, my first in-person meeting.
Ooh.
But we're still waiting on that July 1st date to actually start the work with the, with the architect, so it was kind of just planning. We did review the, the work that they're, they're planning to do, the project understanding, the scope of the work, the site planning, the conceptual planning, and the cost estimate preparation, and how they're breaking down the fee, but we really couldn't get going until July 1st, so we plan on meeting after July. July 7th and then July 28th.
Great. Okay. Topics for future discussion. Now, I just had the goal thing that I, I really thought we needed to address.
Yeah, I was taking some notes too for the workshop, and I even thought open meeting law might be good to review too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Along with the protocols.
Absolutely. Okay, if that's all there is, that's all there is, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at 9:00 on 9:00 p.m.
A second motion?
All in favor? Aye. Then we are done. And you finished your first meeting.